We're on? Okay. Good evening. I am David Assad, the Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Fall River. It's 6:00 PM on Thursday, February 20th, 2020. We are meeting at one government center in the committee hearing room. This is a meeting of a local public body and as such is subject to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law Chapter 38, Section 20, commonly known as the Open Meeting Law. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 38, Section 20, Subsection F, I hereby notify all persons in attendance that this meeting is being recorded with both video and audio devices. Our recording secretary this evening is Brittany Farrier, the lady to my left. She's recording an audio version and four of her government TV. Alex Mello is recording both the video and audio version. If anyone desires to make an audio, video, or combination recording thereof, please notify me now and I shall make a public announcement of your intention. Present this evening are permanent members, from my left to right, John Frank III, James Corkins, Attorney Carolyn Marisette, Vice Chair, and Dan Dupere. We currently have no alternate members, but expect Mayor Coogan to fill these positions. The gentleman to my immediate right is William Roth, Director of Planning for the City of Fall River. Brittany, have all petitions to be considered and properly advertised and all interested parties notified in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Zoning Board of Appeals and Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40A is amended.
Yes.
I declare the February 20th, 2020 regularly scheduled meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Fall River open for such business as shall regularly come before it. I remind all persons presenting before the Board, including the petitioners, abudders, anyone in support and anyone opposed to the petition, that your presentation should be limited to three minutes. Questions and responses must be directed through the Chairman. The Board's rules and regulations direct the Board to specifically look for information which supports the petitioner's claim. As such, the petitioner should identify and factually support the basis for the petition. I hereby advise the petitioners and all interested persons that this Board is the Zoning Board of Appeals. This Board's authority exists pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 48 and is limited in scope and deals with the use of land as regulated by Chapter 86 of the ordinances of the City of Fall River. Additional permits, licenses, reviews, and/or approvals may be required for the specific development and/or use which is the subject of the petition before the Zoning Board this evening. The clerks in the building, planning, engineering, and licensing departments are competent in the discharge of their duties as clerks. They are, however, not lawyers and are not competent to give legal advice. The action taken by this Board has a real and lasting effect upon the title to your real estate. I urge all petitioners to seek competent legal counsel before filing your petitions and after a decision of the Board has been made. For example, there is a city ordinance, 2015-11, Section 10-1, requiring site plan reviews. A copy of the ordinance is available at the city clerk's office or from the planning department. I remind everyone that the building inspector is the zoning enforcement authority and you are here this evening because the building inspector has determined that your proposed action is contrary to the City of Fall River's zoning ordinances. The City Charter, Section 9-18, mandates that all multiple-member bodies develop and adopt rules or policies for public comment. We have adopted such a policy, which in short allows you to sign up in the back of the room at the end of the meeting will allow you to address the Board for things that are pertinent to the Zoning Board. Administratively, pursuant to our rules and regulations, Section A, Paragraph 2, Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40A, Section 12 and Section 9-7 of the City Charter, the Board shall elect a Chair, Vice Chair, and Clerk from its permanent members at its first meeting on the New Year. We could not take that action at our January 2020 meeting because it was inadvertently missing from the published agenda. We can't take care of that administrative duty this evening because it was, in fact, included in our February 2020 published notice. I cannot participate in Agenda Items Number 3, 6, and 7 this evening. It has been our practice to entertain petitioners' requests to have their matters continue to the next meeting when we expect alternate members to be available and have a full five-member Board to decide your petition. If those items go forward this evening, then they will be chaired by Vice Chair Carolyn Marisette. Any unanimous vote will be required to obtain the relief requested in the petition. First, we will dispense with the administrative component of electing the Chair, Vice Chair, and Clerk for the 2020 calendar year. Thereafter, if the petitioners of Items 3, 6, and 7 request to continue their matter to our March 19th, 2020 meeting, we will act upon those requests. Otherwise, we will start with Agenda Item 01. Are there any questions before we begin? Okay. Here we've none, so let's take care of the administrative component. So for calendar year 2020, we need to elect a Chair, Vice Chair, and Clerk.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate yourself as the Chair to continue the same slate as existing. Attorney Marisette, Vice Chair, and James Corkins, Clerk.
Okay. Any discussion, any second on that motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of that motion? All right. The slate for 2020 is Chair David Assad, Vice Chair Carolyn Marisette, and Clerk James Corkins. Petition is for Items 3, 6, and 7. So Agenda Item Number 3. Ian Carey, 60 Goside Street Lot S1144. You're going to give it to us in writing so we don't want to follow up the... This is special permit request pursuant to Section 86424 requesting to change existing nonconforming use of commercial bank into a 10-unit apartment development consisting of five two-unit buildings with garages and off-street parking. So that's Dan's... Dan Aguiar is making the request on behalf of the petitioner Ian Carey. Is there anyone here that came in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here that came opposed to this petition? Did I get a motion? Was there anybody? I didn't see anyone. Motion to allow the continuance to the March 19th meeting. Motion by Jim Corkins, second by John Frank. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, so that's continued. Agenda Items Number 6 and 7, I saw Attorney Gloria Pacheco. Do you want to continue them or do you want to go forward?
Do you want to table it? I said it in two letters this afternoon.
Oh, so we have two letters from Attorney Gloria Pacheco to table these matters. Agenda Items Number 6 and 7. 6 is Patricia Connolly and Pamela Rigo, care of Attorney Gloria Pacheco, vacant lot on Grinnell Street Lot F1720, a variance request to build a single-family home waiving use and minimal frontage, side yard, and area requirements in the R4 District Lot Size 5,180 plus or minus square feet. Did anyone come out this evening in favor of this petition? Did anyone come out in favor or opposed to this petition? Okay, so can I get a motion to continue this until, act on, per written request, to table it until the March 19th meeting?
We'll continue it to the Agenda Items 6 and 7.
6 and 7. Okay, so let me read Number 7. Broadway Properties LLC, care of Attorney Gloria Pacheco, 1172, 1174 Bedford Street Lot L91, variance request to construct a four-unit retail building waiving requirements in the BN District Lot Size 12,671 plus or minus square feet. Did anyone come out this evening in favor of this petition or opposed to this petition?
This request was also to amend for the next meeting.
And the letter from Attorney Gloria Pacheco for Agenda Item Number 7 was to amend the petition so the appropriate fees would have to be paid along with that, if my recollection is correct. So do I have a motion to table them and have the appropriate fees paid to make it to the March 19th, 2020 meeting? Second? Second. Dan Dupere? All those in favor? Okay, so Agenda Items Number 6 and 7 will be on the March 19th meeting. Glory, you pay the appropriate fees to get it. And I think administratively that takes care of that. Agenda Item Number 01, Weaver's Cove Industrial Park LLC, care of Richard Aiden Island, Junior Esquire. This matter was tabled from our January 16th meeting, but since that meeting, Corporation Counsel and Mr. Nyland have filed with the Land Court a stipulation of dismissal. This case no longer exists before the Land Court. Therefore, there's no further action for this Board to take. So Agenda Item Number 01 would be off the list. Is there anyone here that came in favor of this petition or opposed to this petition? Okay. So Agenda Item Number 02, ASE Investments LLC, 69R Alden Street Lot J279, amended petition for variance and special permit request to construct a 16-unit townhouse-style development consisting of four three-unit buildings and two two-unit buildings, providing 36 parking spaces, waiving requirements in the CMD Commercial Mill District Lot Size 68,000 plus or minus square feet with no frontage on an accepted street.
Good evening, Chairman. Board members, for the record, my name is Dan Aguiar. I am a Senior Project Manager at Sitech Engineering with addresses here in the city as well as Vamit and Marshville. Just going to drop off a couple of colored drawings of what I'll put up on the presentation board in a couple of minutes just in case you can't see more. And as the Chairman stated, this application is filed on behalf of the property owner, ASE Investments LLC with real estate of 69R Alden Street. You would all know this parcel of land as Parker Candy. I'm sure you all grew up, or if you hadn't, you would have known through the city that down within the existing mill complex of, off of Alden Street where they had been recently had some renovations of some mill buildings, and I apologize if not everyone can see this one. I want the audience to see it as well as the Board, but the Board has the smaller colored ones. So again, for orientation purposes, north is headed up straight on the plan that you have as well as mine. Shaded in this yellow line is the parcel in question. You'll see in this gray area, that's the foundation remains of the Parker Candy Building that had been demolished after the fire many, many years ago. On this plan, we have Quikashan Street running south to north and then Alden Street running west to east. Directly to the west of our parcel is the first mill complex that had gotten rehabbed that fronts along Quikashan Street. There's a commercial component up along this area here, and I believe these are called the Curtains, I believe. Then directly to our east is the forward of a knitting mill that within the last year or two also went that same type of renovation. This all, this property was under one property owner many, many years ago, and in the early 40s, there was a subdivision parcel that had taken place for this, creating separate lots for the different mill buildings as well as the Parker Candy Building, which is ours, which is this rear parcel here as well. And what I want you to see on this plan is that during that subdivision process, and I have other copies of the subsequent plans to it, when they had gone through this subdivision process, they went to the extent of creating a right-of-way that you see shown here in pink. On your plan, you also see that shown as a dotted yellow line, and that was to provide access and to maintain access for this parcel of land from Alden Street. And that currently now coming down through that area, you can make that maneuver and come through as well. Additionally, on this plan and on other subdivision plans, which I think I did submit, the curtain loft building, there is also a way running through that parking lot to their entrance that the Parker Candy Building retains rights for access in and out of the building. So even though we have a landlocked parcel of land, at that time, they went through the extent of making sure that there was a deeded right-of-way through the Land Court, these are Land Court plans, and through the subsequent deeds, that that right-of-way and access remained open so that Parker Candy could use it as well as the other parcels as well. So that gets us to the existing condition of where the site began. Now, this parcel of land has come into the current ownership through a purchase process that the city was involved in taking. Someone bought the parcel at auction, and they've now come up with what we are here to discuss this evening. You may recall the initial presentation of the initial proposal was to build a five- or a six-story building with 32 to 36 units in a singular building. After the owner of the property discussed that proposal with one of the abudders and listened to some of the concerns that they had, he circled back with me and came up with the scheme that you see before you today, which is a townhouse-style development of a three-unit building, three-unit building, three-unit, three, a two, and then another two. So shaded in light gray on this plan as well as the other one that you have as well, that is that same right-of-way access that we have to get in off of Alden Street. And then also, again, coming in through the knitting mills property, we have a way that's not as well-defined as this, but it's clear that we do have additional access, that we're not necessarily counting on, but we do have that access. So this right-of-way actually shrouds our lot line as well as the abutting lot lines of both the knitting mills property and the curtain loft as well. So when we went into this proposal, we wanted to ensure that we had adequate parking. You'll see on the submitted plan, we exceed the parking requirements for the number of units we have. I think it's on the plan. I believe we have proposed 37, sorry, 36 spaces where 32 are required, and that's two units per each unit. So we provided that additional parking onsite as well, not impeding the existing right-of-way. The existing right-of-way will stay intact, and in fact, if you look at the more detailed close-up plan, and not that it's information that the Zoning Board of Appeals is really concerned with, but when one of the abutting properties developed their land, a number of items were constructed within that right-of-way and were technically impede our traffic, getting in and out of the site, also for them as well as us. But that's really not a concern of yours. So to make sure that that wasn't a concern of yours, or the neighbors, or to us, what we've shown on this plan is basically an expansion of that right-of-way to allow two-way traffic to continue in both sites. What happens is when we come around this corner, there was a concrete sidewalk that you'll see built within the shaded gray area of, I'm a transformer, so there were some items that were built within the right-of-way that we have access to that squeezes our width to only singular traffic. And actually, on their plans, they have singular traffic in that direction. We, however, need two-way directional traffic so that we can get back out of our site. They had the luxury of getting around their building and going back out through their own land, but we don't have rights to that right-of-way. So we need this right-of-way to be open for two lanes. So what we proposed is expanding that right-of-way, and the abutter will have accessibility to use that as well. So they will now also have two-way traffic on that side of the building, making their traffic patterns better as well. So as you see on the plan here, shaded in the darker gray area, those are our proposed parking spaces while within our property boundary limits.
You're expanding the right-of-way on your own property.
That's correct. So we're basically, we're taking our own land...
Yeah, I just want to be clear that you're expanding...
...to make things work better for just ourselves and for the abutter as well. Rather than go through the litigation of, hey, take out your sidewalk, take out your transformer, we have rights to this going in and out. We've chosen not to go that route. We always still could, but we've chosen just to basically fight it and expand the right-of-way onto our own property. And whatever legal documents and right-of-way expansion we need to provide for the owner of the knitting mills property, that can be written into the agreement that, or conditions that this Board grants. The site itself borders on the Quikashan River, as you can see in the aerial photos as well in this area. That Quikashan River has a bordering vegetated wetland associated with it, has a riverfront area, and a flood plain. We've ensured that all of our construction activity is outside of the 25-foot riverfront area, outside of the flood plain. We will have some buffer zone activity, and that is a permit that the Conservation Commission and DDP will need to grant, and that's a separate filing after we, after we get our relief, hopefully, through the Zoning Board of Appeals. So when we looked at the property, we said, you know, do we really need another high-rise, high-density apartment building? Or can we provide some additional type of housing in this area that will allow for the creation of some green space, allow for, you know, the use of the Quikashan River and the views of it? So we've come up with this design so that we can have green space throughout the development and not put everything into one big building needing a massive parking, all in one parking area. I think this proposal is far less dense, of course, than where our previous application was, but I think it will introduce some much-needed housing in that area other than high-rise apartment buildings. So the relief that we're here to seek this evening, although, as I showed you on this Land Court plan, there was a right-of-way created, which we have 169.3 feet of frontage along this way, and then an additional 520 feet this way. The fact that that's a way and it does, you know, open up to Alden Street, we have felt to protect the client and any potential landowner that we should seek zoning relief, basically under the guise that we don't have legal frontage on an approved way in the City of Fall River. Although we can say, you know, we have frontage on this way, just to make sure, we want to make sure that this Board understands we don't have legal frontage, which I believe the requirement in this commercial mill district would be 100 feet on an actual approved way. So that's the variance portion of what we're here for this evening. That's the singular variance that we need. Going beyond to the special permit portion of the process, in this commercial mill district, as you all know, the Board has the ability to grant a permit for multifamily housing, and that's the direction that we've gone in. We've ensured that we've met all of the building setbacks for the commercial mill district, which is 10 feet in the front, 10 side, and 10 rear. The minimum lot area is 10,000 square feet. We have 68,000 square feet. So the two sets of relief that we're here for is, one, for the variance with regards to no frontage on a public way, and two, is a special permit to allow this multifamily housing to come into this area. When you look at that special permit process, and you all know this, this use of 16-unit homes, a townhouse style, is far less detrimental than any of the commercial uses that we could have now within this, what was a commercial development, which has now come back to being residential with the redevelopment of these mills. So these two mills receive the exact same special permit with regards to expansion of multifamily housing in a commercial mill district on a much higher scale. I believe this is 100 units, and I'm not sure how many are in the curtain lofts. So this is a much smaller-scale project, a little bit different type of housing, but again, the same permitting process of being special permit through the Zoning Board of Appeals. One other item is just so that you understand beyond, and you do, beyond the scope of the Zoning Board decision, there are a number of other permits that we need to get through the building department, through site plan review, through the Conservation Commission. So this is just the first hurdle of moving this project forward, but without this initial permit, the others will need to be completed. If you have any specific questions regarding any of the construction activity, any of the legal acquisitions, the right-of-way, anything like that, I'd be more than glad to answer those questions. And I do believe you have some additional information in your packages of the old subdivision plans and how this parcel came to be, but if you have anything that you need cleared up with that, just let me know and I'll...
How large would the individual units be?
How large would they be? I believe they are approximately, if you look at this corner unit, item number three, so 24 feet wide by 36 feet deep, two stories.
Are they all going to be the same?
These will all be the same, other than the fact that this is a cluster of three, this is a cluster of two, and this one, you see, is one, unit one is a little bit larger, and that's so that we can create a handicap-accessible unit only on one floor.
Any, how many bedrooms in each unit or...
It could potentially be two or three, so it won't be limited to the number of bedrooms. My guess is a three.
Emergency access for a fire department?
Well, currently now, the access that we're proposing to use is the same access that this mill complex uses and this mill complex uses. So we have, we have a deeded right-of-way to use what I've shown you shaded in gray plus this other right-of-way. When it comes to emergency vehicles, there are a number of different venues and avenues for them to...
But the other access is wide enough for a fire...
Yes, yeah, because what happens is even this mill complex now, and again, this is only for emergency purposes, the fire department would have the ability to use this right-of-way, this right-of-way back out to Alden, this right-of-way back out to Quikashan. So there are multiple points that they could get. And you can see on here, this is all wide-open parking area, all wide-open parking area. You can come right up to the buildings here, right up to the buildings here, right up along, this is all paved parking lot, all the way up to that point.
Any other questions? Dan, Carolyn? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition?
Opposed.
Yes, sir. You identify yourself for the record, please.
Absolutely. Can I put some things on this table?
Yes, you can.
Thank you.
Wait, wait, what are you, right there.
Oh.
Right in front. Dan, he's all right. He won't bite you.
No. As long as you're still getting this.
You stay right there.
I'm Lee Waltman. I'm with the Knitting Mill Apartments and Abutter. We opened 100 units of senior affordable apartments in the summer. Everything's going great. We've rented up. Things are good. We provide the city with 5,200 square feet of free space. Actually, it's a dollar a year for their Flint Senior Center, which is the premier senior center among the four that the city operates. The only problem we have is we do have some traffic problems. We have elderly people. We have 150 approximately living in our units. The Flint Senior Center draws up to 100 a day, sometimes more. And next door, Curtain Loft, they have over, they have almost 100 units with well over 100 people. I don't know how many they have. And people are coming back and forth across this little right-of-way, these little right-of-way from their building to our building. By the way, do I have more than three minutes or do I have...
Keep talking, Lee.
Okay. I had a five-page thing to read, which I'm not going to read, but I'm going to, if you don't mind, hand you pictures, which will save me from talking so much. And Dan, I'll probably ask you some questions you may or may not be able to answer.
When I, when you direct, the questions come through...
Yes, okay, fine. So what you're looking at is a north-south piece of property. At the north end is the south part of the senior center of our building. The, the street on the right is the right-of-way, and it's one-way traffic going south. The bump out on the left of our building, well, you can see the gray steps. That's the main entrance, one of the two main entrances, and the only direct entrance into the Flint Senior Center. Because there's a five-foot sidewalk there, the right-of-way shrinks to 25 feet. There's an island that you see on the other side of it. It's also in the plans if you have in front of you the island. So you're, when people come to pick up the seniors, they park there a lot because some seniors don't want to walk all the way to our parking lots. And it's quite crowded in there, and we do have some traffic problems. People from Knitting Mill go over to visit Curtain Loft, and people from Curtain Loft come to our place. And there's people walking from the building on the left to the building on the right, right to that where that car is, where those steps are, all the time. And both apartments allow dogs and cats, and people are always out walking dogs and cats, and we are concerned about the increased traffic that we'll get from this project. Another thing to look at is the maroon truck, which is in the right-of-way at the north end of this little driveway. Not that people park there often, but that section of the mill bumps out into the right-of-way by about two and a half feet, and then there's this seven-foot sidewalk. So that right-of-way right there is only 22 and a half feet and also creates some parking and traffic problems and is one reason why that section has to be one-way. Now, where the snow begins is about the end of our blacktop on the right, and our property line runs to the west, which is to the left, approximately 10 to 12 feet in the neighborhood of those yellow cones. This was approved by this committee, this Board, as green space, the little hill where the snow is, is a little hill of green space, and then this asphalt is part of a runoff. And so our property line goes basically halfway across this. And so our property line goes basically halfway across this to then to the area near those cones. And we're under the impression that it can't be blacktopped. But, I mean, I've been told that that area cannot be blacktopped because it was approved for us as green space and that's our property. If that's the case, then they can't cross our property to get to the road. But that's for lawyers to figure out.
Mr. Chairman, you want to do it bit by bit?
Well, just.
Just so they don't get.
I just have the question before I ask you to answer. The thirty-foot right of way, and I know this just from my own independent research, the land court has established that thirty-foot right of way that gets Alden Street down to this piece of property. What you're talking about is these expansions of the sidewalk and other things into it. Those are encroachments that you, you or your predecessor entitles have existed there, which anyone that has the benefit of this right of way could object to. The fact that you own it, which I think you do, you own to that westerly boundary line, but it's subject to the right to pass and repass by everyone that was established by the land court. So this board, this board. If we did anything, and I don't remember that we did anything, we have no jurisdiction to change ownership or rights to pass or repass. That exists and, again, that's, that's for the other lawyers that get paid more bucks than this board does to figure out. But the, what I'm understanding for Mr. Aguirre is, instead of making an issue about your encroachment into the right of way, they're proposing to use their own land to make it wide enough to have the pass and repass to this, unless I'm mistaken. That's what you're doing.
To make sure that we have a minimum twenty-two foot aisle.
And as far as the maintenance.
Both entities could use.
And as far as the maintenance of that right of way, you're the surveying estate and this particular property is the dominant estate. And there was a recent, couple of recent cases that came down dealing with this that said that they have the right to maintain and preserve and do whatever they want to do to keep the right of way open and workable. I just throw that out there by way of discussion. Dan, do you want to respond?
If I may respond to at least the few items that Mr. Waltman had, had to be done with. Getting back to, I've been out there.
He's got a memo.
I don't know exactly what we're dealing with. So we have two developed parcels on either side of us, large apartment complexes, one hundred units in this building, for instance. This parcel specifically, the Knitting Mills Apartments, through the zoning board's special permit process, allowed them to only provide one parking space per unit. That's not the norm. So to allow them to do what they wanted to do, this board went beyond what would normally take place and granted them relief to allow one space per unit. Well, what's happening is one space a unit isn't cutting it. Mr. Waltman had intentions of purchasing this parcel of land, but didn't want to spend the right amount of money to do it. So my client purchased the land. Now, we have, again, as the chairman stated, we have this right of way that the knitting mills through their development plans, which I have, so this wasn't just built by accident. The plans that were submitted show the right of way and show them proposing constructed improvements within the right of way. Well, you can't do that. Just because you need a sidewalk, you can't just build one and impede the access. At the time, we're not worried about the access, we're going to buy that piece of land. Well, sometimes that doesn't always happen. So, again, my client has gone above and beyond to reduce the size of this project. This is a sixteen-unit development. What traffic impact is sixteen units going to have that two hundred hasn't had already? And we're going to improve the accessibility for both parcels, the knitting mills as well as our own. So to come in and speak that grounds for not moving this project forward is regards to traffic, parking and right of ways which they diminish through their construction activities is absurd to me, absolutely absurd. And I've been coming before this board since nineteen ninety-four. I remember sitting here when this petition came before the board, an attorney, Jay Clark, and presented it to the board. I sat there saying, how in God's name are they approving something with one parking space per unit? And, you know, my client has played ball through this entire process. Day one, I informed him, and this is probably six or eight months ago, I explained to my client, David, if you'd like to, you can have your attorney, Arthur Deasentis, send the butter a letter asking them to remove these sidewalks, remove their transformer and widen the right of way back out to thirty feet. He chose not to do that because he's not a land developer, okay? He's a car salesman and fixed used cars. He bought this parcel of land to try and create a few apartments as a retirement so that he could collect some income in the future. Not a gigantic project in a city that he grew up in, still resides in. And so for them now to be handcuffed by things that larger developers and larger developments have done to this piece of land, I understand that he purchased this piece of land from the city with no promises. But knowing full well, he made sure that he had the protective rights to this right of way. He didn't just go buy a piece of land and say, oh, I'm going to take a shot. He did his homework. He made sure that he had the right of way. And all these things weren't constructed necessarily when that process was going on. He initially had us go out and do a survey and our survey revealed these things. To make sure that my survey was correct, I went and pulled all of the files from the butter and their, and their plans. Identical, identical. We're not proposing constructing anything within a right of way. We have to leave it open. That's what right of ways are, especially when they're deeded through the land court. You can't play with that. So there are a number of improvements within this area. Now, luckily, we don't need thirty feet of this right of way. We only need twenty-two feet of it. That's the traveled way that we need that meets the requirements for parking. If we needed a thirty-foot way, there'd be a lot more stuff that needs to come up. Luckily, we don't have to go that route and we were trying not to go that route. And if there was no opposition to our project, I wouldn't be having this conversation with you. But when you have a butter that blatantly goes like this and then now wants to stick it down my client's throat because they bought it before they could, that's just not right. It's not at all. Legally or not legally, it's just not.
What's before the board is a special permit and the variance.
That's correct.
That's the, the background is interesting, but that's what we have before.
That is correct.
Mr. Waltman, is there anything else?
I just would say that Curtain Loft tried to buy this property when they built, we tried to buy it when we built. We had a purchase and sale to buy it for a number of years and then it ended up going to the city. And we were told by many.
The history is good, but that really has nothing to do with.
Okay, well, he made some allegations that I did.
That's why I shut him off because I don't want to hear it all.
So if you want one, one answer, we were told at the time, and we bid on the property, that no one would buy this property because there was no access to it. And it was almost useless for anything but parking and green space is what we wanted it for. So that's what we were told by many very bright people. In any case, we believe there's a traffic problem. We believe that at least some people that I deal with, that I work with, believe that blacktopping our, our property is not acceptable and we might see you again.
I got it.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Walt was the first one in opposition. You're in opposition, sir?
Not really, but.
Will you identify yourself for the record and tell us what it is you'd like to tell us?
I'm the president from the Flint Neighborhood Association. And the reason that I'm not in opposition or in favor is the reason I'm here today because I had no information on this project. So I have all the questions. I had to come here to hear the answers for some of my questions. One thing that I'd like to tell the board is the neighborhood has been working together with all these projects that open up. We were favored. We don't want to stop nobody from progress. But we went so far as writing letters, supporting the, the projects to the state so they could get some credit, tax credit on their projects. So we're not here opposed. I would just, I hope that I had a phone call or something because I know I had a couple of calls already with questions and I had no answers and I said I was going to come here to, to know. One of the things that we were trying to do on that neighborhood is, and, and was something, was a request that we did when the project.
Excuse me.
Was, it's value important, the age that's going to be renting on this, on this, on this project. So we have boats, we have over two hundred apartments that they are now for sixty-five and older. Now is how much difference it's going to make putting this project right on the center of those two ugly apartments, living apartments. That's what the concern I have right now. I didn't heard anything about drainage water from this project because we do have a flood problem on Quikashan Street. Again, traffic. One of the things that we were happy that we were able to put people there, sixty-five and older, and was because half of those people actually drive, okay? So the other half don't drive. So all this working together, that's, that's how much work we will be able to turn. And I hope we keep going. We have two more, two more mills there to be fixed and we will keep supporting as much we can. But, I mean, it has to be, we have to work together. We have to work together and with that, I'm not, again, I'm repeating, I'm not saying that I'm opposed to. I'm just want to make sure that these answers that I have and that I just asked you probably have nothing to do with you, boards, but I hope those questions have answers. And it's not too late, like a couple of other projects that the city is, is working right now, that it's too late for the neighbors to, to have and to work on them. So since it's the, it's the beginning, let's work together. Me, as president of the neighborhoods, I have a responsibility because I don't want them to say, how come this was done and, you know, and you didn't went there, you didn't know anything about. I'm getting my information and I just hope that I, that I could, you know. I will be here if I had the answers, I will be here because there was no need for me to be. The only reason I can be here was because I needed those answers and I had a few.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Aguirre has his hands up, maybe he can respond to some of that.
If I can respond, Mr. Chairman. I know Mr. Caesar and I applaud the work that he does. He's actually a client and I've worked for him on some other projects in the city. He has my phone number, he has my email. Doesn't hesitate to use it when he needs to. This petition has been before the zoning board of appeals since October. Plans on file, public record, plans, revised plans. The neighborhood group, I don't believe, is on the distribution list as a director butter or in a butter to a butter. So notification would not necessarily be sent to him. They have access to the agendas to every city meeting, whether it's zoning, planning, conservation commission. So to say that.
No, I got, I got the notice issue. It's not an issue, but can you address, is it something that you've addressed already for drainage and sewage or is that something that we're going to say?
Indirectly, I addressed. I addressed the fact that we do need to file through site plan review. As you can see and as, as the, as the planner will, I assume, agree with, we have a site here that is quite impervious already. At the end of the day, stormwater wise, we'll be making a drastic improvement to the site post-construction than what sits out there now and then what was there previously.
My recollection about this site, there are utilities that go to the site already.
That's correct.
There's sewer and there's water.
There's sewer and water within that right of way.
No, no, that's what I'm saying. I know that, I know that from my previous work in the area, that there is water and sewer going to this location. So that's not something that's going to be served by septic systems. It's going to be tied into the city sewer, city water.
City sewer, city water.
And my recollection is the electricity is still there, that, those type of utilities are still coming down.
Somebody actually put a pole in the right of way. Which we're going to have to pay to move and put underground utilities to that point. No, I mean, anything under the veins of construction activity would be under the building department, conservation commission and site plan review, the purview of that. The zoning board is charged with strictly dealing with, as you know, the special permit request and the variance with regards to no frontage. I think anyone looking at the proposed traffic, this traffic generated by these sixteen units would be far less, far less detrimental than any commercial use that could be taken on by right. And again, this is a drop in the bucket compared to the amount of vehicles that access this entire, we'll call it a complex. There are a number of mill, different mill developed sites, commercial, business uses and apartments in this area. I've been there on many occasions. It's not an overtaxed vehicular area. There aren't cars coming in and out and it's, it's not a super busy location. And again, we do have the ability to get in and out of this site pretty freely. And I cannot imagine that the traffic or either circulation for pedestrians, vehicles or turning maneuvers would be difficult for anyone.
Good.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Caesar. Is that sufficient response? Thank you. Anyone else in here in favor or opposed? Okay.
The one, the one question I didn't hear answered was, it's not, it's not age restricted?
No, 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 there'd be no age restriction. And again, and I work for many developers in the city and everyone goes this age-restricted route one because it's easier and there is a need for it. But we've done multiple, multiple, multiple age-restricted developments. It gets to a point where you can see what rents are and even three tenants and there needs to be another housing stock available to people similar to this. People that can't afford their own single-family home, they don't want to necessarily live in a tenement like I grew up in. This gives them a middle of the road. You've seen a number of these over the past three or four years, Rodman Street, Loeb Street, Evelyn's Way, Griffin Street, number of special permits within the last year of this type of housing, which the city is in dire need of. So no, it would not be age restricted, David.
Does that answer your question? Anything else, members of the board? Bill, do you have anything you want to?
I didn't, I didn't have the research on it. Isn't there a plan, spur extension for the, for the pathway?
There is, there is.
I don't see it, I, I know, I know.
Well, no.
I know it's on this, I know it's on the two.
I believe, I actually believe that it's on the other side because this, this parcel of land did used to continue on across Quikashan. I was not able to ascertain any existing easement for any expansion of the bike path. If there is one in place, there's one in place and then we have to deal with. But I, I am unaware of one, I tried to find one.
I don't think it's on this side.
I don't think I can see that.
I think it's on the other side.
There's an easement just for the heck of it. It comes across.
Your lower parking lot.
Our lower parking lot interests their property, but I don't know where it is on their property.
There's also some flowage rights that exist there too, but that doesn't. That was for the old, that was for the old mills for the water coming diverted from the Quikashan that way. Anyway, okay. Anyone else?
Is Father Travassos parked there right on the right?
On the right. Father Travassos would be to the east.
If you look at the aerial photograph, it's to the east of the knitting mills and yes.
Can I just go up there for one second?
Yeah, go ahead. Well, let's get it all up. I don't remember any taking, if anything there or somebody taking it.
Anyway, there's, there's granite. I'm not sure if it's that or here, the granite outcropping that the right of way comes right next to and it crosses our parking lot pretty low. And it comes across their property, but I don't know where.
Thank you. All right, members of the board, you've heard, we've got two, we've got two pieces to deal with. One is a variance for the waiver of frontage because there is no frontage. We've got the frontage for this particular lot or the access coming off the thirty-foot way that comes off Alden Street that's being delineated there. Dan didn't show the other access off Quikashan Street. So we're just left with the thirty-foot wide way from Alden Street that would give.
I think you have it in your package though.
It's not, it's not on the plan. That's all I'm saying, it's not on the plan.
But I submitted the supplemental information of the land court plans. I can add another one if you don't have it.
No, just, just, I just want to make sure that we've got, yeah, it must be there. I just don't have it at my fingertips, that's all.
Sean, yours wrong.
Yeah, so the way.
Yours wrong. And this is the, this is the initial plan.
What was, what was the width of the issue?
It's not as well defined.
But it's there. But at least the thirty-foot land court one is defined.
That's defined, correct.
And that's, so that's going to be the one that we'll deal with. So that's gonna be the one that we'll deal with. There is.
If we're not relying on that.
No, no, Quikashan, but I know in the change of title, there is the right to pass and repass from Quikashan Street to that, to the back. So that's, that's number one, is the variance part. So I don't know whether someone wants to make a motion to accept the wave.
Ask Boba Wester.
Good. This is the last one, but we're gonna start to look.
Last one. Um, if, if the easement for the second phase of the bike path crosses where those buildings are, does that have an impact?
Well, my, again, I'll defer to the lawyers, but if there's going to be, if there's been a taking, then somebody's gonna get compensated for that bike path because I don't think the bike path showed up in the deed to ASE. I don't think the bike path taking showed up in your deed and I don't think it showed up in four twenty Quikashan Street.
So what, what happened is Gary writes a sold part of our parking lot, what is now our parking lot, to the bike path people.
That's different selling if there was in fact a grant of it. Um, yours, when you're talking about this easement for the bike path, I don't remember when I was doing the titles to those parcels, the city or someone else having a taking by eminent domain to say, I'm taking this property for the bike path or a grant.
As I, as I recall, they did not take it by eminent domain, the, the bike path people.
So I think, so I think in the, the deed into ASE and what the city gave, I don't remember seeing a subject to, the dimensions were given, this is what the size of the lot was, and I don't remember any, and I'll defer to Dan because I don't have the deeds in front of me, that said that there was any restriction or subject to the right to pass and repass of the bike path.
And Mr. Chair, if, if it does come about, as Mr. Walman's asking, um, then easement is in place. We either have to honor it.
You have to honor it.
Relocate it or revise the building location.
But I don't, but I don't remember, as I was preparing, I don't remember seeing anything of the deed from the city that said that there was anything. It was just a meets and bounds description. Well, no, because we're gonna start deliberating right now, so it's not a question.
Right, but that's why I said if there is one, we have to abide by it.
Yeah.
All right, I make a motion to grant the variance on the waiver of the frontage.
Okay, so Carolyn makes the motion to waive the frontage and accept the thirty-foot right of way as the frontage for this lot. Do we have a second? Oh, that's what that is. Dan, Dan Dupire, second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Okay, so that, the variance for the frontage is granted. The next part of this particular, uh, is for the special permit. Special permitting is allowed under our grid and what the board has to find simply is that such non-residentially zoned area would not be adversely affected by such a residential use and that permitted use in such a zone are not noxious to a multifamily use. That's under section, that's Massachusetts general law, chapter, section nine, uh, one, two, three, third paragraph, uh, first sentence. So that's the, that's what we have to determine if we want, under our grid, that allows multifamily uses in the commercial mill district. If we have that finding, then we can grant the special permit. We also have the authority, if we're granting the special permit, uh, the authority to put conditions, if we wanna put any conditions in there. But, so the first thing we need to do is if you wanna go forward with the special permit, then we need to find that the non-residentially zoned area would not be adversely affected by such a residential use and that the permitted uses in such a zone are not noxious to a multifamily use.
I'll make the motion.
John Frank makes the motion. Do we have a second on the motion? Second, Jim Cork. Is any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Four, five. So the finding is that the special permit is granted for those units under, good.
Yes.
Two, two, because it's a spe, the variance, well, let, let's deal with it. So the, the special permit, two years, so I don't want you coming back for the two years, but the variance has to be one year and if you need the extension, come back for the, I mean, that's, that's gonna be the six-month extension, but that one, I don't think we can grant for, for eighteen months. I think you're gonna get the year, but the special permit can be for two. So that's amending your motion, two year for the grant of the special permit. It has to go through all the other, unless you wanna express.
If you wanna expressly condition site plan.
Basically.
I always like, I always like seeing that in print.
All right. So your motion is modified to include site plan review. Okay. Right in. So, okay, in for two years. So that's the motion. It's passed. Five, that's been granted, special permit and variance. Yeah, you are. You gotta, give me it for the record. Oh, she, you've got the deed?
Yeah.
Okay. So I just wasn't quick enough to go through and find it.
They put it in here for one.
All right.
I wouldn't go ahead.
So we've got this, we've got this. Thank you. So that was agenda items O two. Agenda item O three, estate of Edward Amorin, three twenty Renaud Street, lot heat twenty sixty-four sixty-six. This is an amended petition. Variance request to subdivide the existing parcel into two lots, leaving the existing two-family dwelling on one parcel of seventeen thousand nine hundred plus or minus square feet while constructing a new single-family dwelling on the second parcel of eight thousand two hundred plus or minus square feet, waiving requirements in the R eight district.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Dan Aguirre of SciTech Engineering, uh, representing the estate of Edward S. Amorin regarding the real estate at three twenty Renaud Street. You may recall that the last meeting, we had presented a petition to you subdividing this parcel back into the original three assessed, not the lot numbers. After discussions with the board and discussions with the neighbors, um, I requested that we be allowed to table the matter, come back to you with a revised plan, which we had submitted back on January twenty-first, which creates a total of two lots, leaving three twenty Renaud Street on parcel one with ninety-seven hundred square feet and one hundred and twenty-three feet of frontage on Renaud Street, creating parcel two with eighty feet of frontage on Grattan Street and eighty-two hundred square feet in area. Both of those frontage in area, uh, that are being provided meet the requirements of the R eight district. The only relief we're here to seek this evening.
Excuse me, David, take it outside, please. Thank you.
The only relief we're here seeking this evening and as we had discussed that night would be the rear yard setback to three twenty Renaud Street. You'll see where we have proposed fifteen feet plus or minus off of that bulkhead and that fifteen feet off of, uh, the other rear lot line as well.
So it should be twenty, but you're just seeking.
That is correct. So, so you'd be granting a five-foot relief of the rear yard, um, three twenty. Both parcels meet all of the other area requirements. The proposed structure, we've shown a building envelope that shows us meeting all of the building setbacks for the new parcel. So the new parcel, everything will conform.
Parcel two is a perfectly conforming with a building envelope that perfectly conforms.
That's correct.
Parcel one, the only relief that you're going to need there is the rear setback.
Yeah.
The back garage is being raised.
That's correct, yes.
Sorry, just read that.
That's okay.
No, no, that's gonna be an express condition if we grant. If not, it has to be expressed in the decision and we have to have it. Otherwise I end up with that infamous case that keeps me up at night. Got it? All right, any, anything else, Dan?
That is it.
Members of the board, any questions? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to the, okay. I, I saw, wait, wait, I'm gonna get to you. I will let you speak, but I saw these young ladies' hands. I wasn't sure. Opposed or in favor? You are in favor of it. You wanna identify yourself for the record, please?
Susan Martins.
Yes.
Two ninety-three Caroline Street.
Okay, you are in favor of this petition. Okay. Madam?
Rachel Maggiorno.
Yes, and you are in favor. Can I have an address, please?
I'll leave it there.
Thank you. Sir?
I'm a tenant. I live there.
Okay, so you are in favor of it. All right, so those are all the people that are in favor. This side is opposed to it. Sir, I'll let you speak. Identify yourself, please.
Richard Souza, Kennedy Street. I represent the Maplewood Association.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we had a, a meeting last night and discussed this again and it appears to be, uh, quite simple. Um, first of all, I have a, a question, uh.
Can you ask your questions to me?
That's correct. Um, the, the sidewalk isn't indicated on the, on the, on the print. Okay, so that garage is, is that garage gonna be demolished?
Yes.
Okay, so what we're doing is we're putting another house, we have, we have a two-family house on the, on the existing piece of property. We're trying to add another house. We have, we don't want postage stamped houses all over the Maplewood section. We brought this up to the board's attention before, I believe, Earl Gardett and that group. We don't wanna have postage stamped houses like it is across the street from this particular, uh, house right here in this area. The traffic on Renaud Street is horrendous now.
Can I stop you right there for a minute, sir?
Sure, go ahead.
Parcel number two that they're proposing.
Correct.
Is in all respects one hundred percent conforming with what the zoning is.
That's correct.
So it's not a postage stamped lot.
Well, that's another house.
It's eight thousand two hundred square feet, eighty-foot frontage, and it meets all the dimensional side yard, front yard, rear yard requirements.
That's correct. We are concerned that something is gonna happen. We're gonna have a, a house here and then when we come back, somebody's gonna come back and wanna put another house alongside of the two-family house. That's gonna get.
Will I try that last one? We said no.
Right now, it's, it's only, it's only one house.
Can I stop you again, sir?
Go ahead.
Last time, that was the original proposal.
Correct.
They, we, that was getting rejected. They came back and amended their proposal to only, this new lot and the two-family would exist as it is. And some of the conversation last time was there will be no further subdivision and no further expansion.
Okay, so this house will go in, but no, no, no additional house here.
That's will be an express condition if this board grants it. This board may still deny it. But the discussion last time, when they were asking for three and the board was, we were saying, how about this and how about that? They got the message because we weren't, we were limited to two. We could get one perfectly conforming lot. The other lot is greater in square footage than what's required, but because it's a pre-existing non-conforming two-family, we, the general conversation was for that three twenty Renaud Street, there would be no further subdivision or any further expansion.
So that'll be it, one house.
If we grant, if we grant this, that, those will be express conditions from this board to that, to this grant. Please continue.
Well, we still, uh, we'd like to object to it.
No, you have the right to object.
Yeah, that's true.
But I just wanna make sure that when you talk about postage stamps, it's not a small lot.
Well, all the houses across the street, some of them don't even have enough depth in, for the driveway to park a car in the, in the driveway itself without it interfering into the sidewalk. So you have cars sticking in the sidewalk, people trying to walk. There's a lot of young people around there. Um, women have to walk out in the street with carriages if they, if they're pushing carriages uh, because there's not enough room to get by the cars that's in the driveway, but yet they're hanging over into the sidewalk.
That's a problem.
That is.
That's a problem and you call the police when you have the cars parked in the sidewalk.
Well, I have, I have called, called the police for other things like that, but yes, that's true. Um, the other thing is the, the Grattan Street is a very heavily traveled street based because the Electrical Wholesalers, which is right down the end of Grattan Street, is the only distributor that handles the southeastern Massachusetts, Tiverton and Little Compton. Plus, they handle all of Aquinic Island, Newport, Middletown. We have trailer trucks. We have six-wheel trucks. We have contractor trucks up and down Grattan Street because they come in from Rodman. They come in through, through, up through Rodman and come down there because it, it gives them a right of way to go right into the driveway, which is the old, um, R E Smith Company. Uh, Electrical Wholesalers have acquired the entire complex there and there's a big solar farm out, out behind it. But they have to supply all this equipment for the naval base, Naval Underwoodland Station, Jamestown. This is where all these contractors come. We have so much traffic on that street. Sometimes it's pathetic. Uh, they just put stop signs because the, that intersection of Grattan and Renaud was, was a very dangerous, uh, intersection because they come flying down the hill, uh, up from Grattan, um, and we have a lot of problems. Just in that area alone, I counted there's about thirty-four cars that's gonna be parked there. Now, if, if this here, um, remains and nothing happens to that parcel one, then I can see them parking. But you had a, you had a two, a two-family house with no, no parking except for what's a little indicated in the dotted lines here on the north side of that house. So we have four, three, at least three families. If, and if they try to stretch it, um, you know, you know, we're gonna have like four families now in, in this little block of thing. We have so much density in housing over there that we have no open space. And as we keep letting people put a, a house on a piece of property that's equal to or less than or just around the, the, the size, we're gonna have no, no air to breathe. It's all gonna be stuck.
One is perfectly conforming, the other one is double the size.
That's true.
They're both larger.
That's true.
What I'm just saying, I mean, it's so, I, I understand what you're saying. I am, I understand the concern. Um, this is what's being proposed as far as parking, if that's a consideration. The board may say that they need to have four parking spaces for three twenty and two for parcel two, but I think parcel two is already proposing two off-street parking. Uh, the other one, the board may consider if that's really a concern, maybe four off-street parking spaces.
The other, the other thing is, uh, for some reason, the house is for sale, so this is not a hot shoe.
I can't, I, I can't address whether or not it's for sale or not.
It is.
No, no, but what I'm saying is that's not really a concern for this board, but this is what we've got.
As far as we're concerned, we have enough houses up there. We don't want any more houses.
Thank you, sir.
The people enjoy the property that they have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam?
My name is Julie Jocelyn. I live on Frost Street. Uh, my only objection would be, is how many times do we have to come down here for this property? Last month we came and they were supposed to revise it. Well, they really didn't revise it. They just split it up where they, they're, they're doing one lot. So what is gonna happen to that number one lot?
So we go from three to two.
Yeah.
And I just told this gentleman that if this, I don't know what the board's gonna vote, but I can tell you that my input is two lots, one is perfectly conforming, this other one is greater and that parcel number one with three twenty is, my recommendation to the other board members is that should be no further, uh, development on it. It has to stay the way it is.
And that, that is my objection, that they would not be able to come back next month or next year or even two years.
If we grant it and we give them conditions.
Yeah.
What, whoever buys it, whoever owns the property, I can't prohibit them from coming back and asking for relief.
Okay.
But the express language of our decision, if it is granted, would be that there should be no further development on the lot. But you, anyone as a landowner, they need the relief, if they need relief, they need a place to come. And where you come is you start at the zoning board of appeals and ask for permission. The board can't say, no, you can't come back. Don't talk to us again. But if we put.
Excuse me, I thought the restrictions was at least two years.
It is. No, no, if for the same, for the same thing, for the same project. But if somebody bought the house and wanted to do something else, they have the right to come back to the board and ask the question.
Yeah.
And if it's within the two years, there's another process. If it's similar or the same, they have to go to the planning board. The planning board has to approve it and then this board has to have a similar hearing to determine it. So yes, there are additional, um, procedural requirements, but if you bought the house and you wanted to do something, you should not be prohibited from coming before the board. You can always ask whether or not you get the relief you're looking for is a different question.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. No, no, I'm good. I'm glad you came out. It's good. Madam?
Hi.
You were here the last time.
I was here the last time. Yeah, I was here the last time in opposition.
Can I have your name, please?
Robin Sheehan, three fifty Frost Street, um, in opposition because they tried to break the lot into three, which was sort of grossly, um, you know, they, they were asking for a little bit too much on the variances. So now it just seems like a, like just a minor step back and the lots certainly are conforming. So, I mean, we really can't stop people from building houses on the conforming lots. And, um, so, I mean, I guess it's fine then because it's conforming.
No, but you lived, listen, you live in the area, so I need your input. That's what.
Right.
Neighbors need to get involved so we know what's happening in the neighborhood. I encourage you to come and talk to it. No, but you lived, listen, you live in the area, so I need your input, that's what, neighbors need to get involved, so we know what's happening in the neighborhood, I encourage you to come and talk to us.
Right.
But I just wanted to make sure that the facts that you're dealing with, this three lots versus two lots versus conforming, make sure we understand what we're talking about. Your concern about the parking is something that maybe this board is going to consider, it's something that I would recommend, that if they're thinking, if the board members are thinking of granting it, those are the conditions that they should think about.
Right, right.
Well, I'm going to have to direct her a planning talk a little bit, but that's where we're coming from. Is there anyone else opposed to this petition? Okay, Mr. Director, do you have any input that we should think about?
Yes, I do. I think that requires site plan review for lot number two, and require a minimum of the two-part off-street parking spaces. Parcel number one, you should add a condition that there is no further subdivision of parcel number one. I would also request that you condition the requirement of a, minimum of a four-lot parking spaces on lot one, and require site plan review. We want to look at that to make sure that it's, you know, that drainage doesn't impact the adjacent property owners, and that, that it, you know, lighting can be screened, the parking lot lights.
And that the existing garage be raised before a building permit be issued.
And that is, that's your condition. But I, I would request that parcel one be conditioned on four off-street parking spaces and site plan review for the parking lot. Parcel number two, site plan review and two off-street, no further subdivision of parcel number one, those would be the conditions that I would recommend if you would approve it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we've heard from who's in favor, who's opposed, and we've heard of those conditions, motion to grant with conditions, motion to deny, what do you want to do?
No approval.
Subject to lot one, no further subdivision, both lots subject to site review. Minimum parking on lot one of four units and on lot two of two units.
Raising of the garage before any building permit.
And later into the garage before any, it could be granted.
All right.
Second.
Second, Dan Dupire, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Okay, so, that petition is granted with those conditions, thank you. Agenda item number one, Michaela and Stephen Guzzi, five fifteen Widemo Street, Lot R one thirty-five, variance request to allow addition to the rear of the existing dwelling, waiving setback requirements in the S District, lot size four thousand nine hundred and seventy-six, plus or minus square feet. Good evening, yes, please.
These are setbacks to follow here.
Good evening, identify yourself for the record and tell us what you want to do.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, my name is Michaela Guzzi, this is my husband, Steve Guzzi.
Good evening.
And we're here to appeal to you for a variance, seeking relief from our existing setback requirements for our S, single-family district. I had prepared a letter, it was included in the packet, I don't know if you'd like me to read it, or if it's already been reviewed.
It was in the package, we must have read it.
I don't know if anyone in the audience wanted to... Okay, I didn't have a formal presentation or anything.
No, no, it's okay, you tell, so go ahead, you tell us what you want to do.
Well, we bought our home, I'll paraphrase, in 2010, our one and only home, and since buying it, we've had two children, they're five and eight, and they're very repugnant, and we're getting cramped in the space we have. So our need for space has increased, we love our house, we've maintained it well, we've updated it, and really, it's, I think, a contribution to the health of our neighborhood. You know, that we've been there for as long as we have, and that we've, you know, kept up our property and, and made these improvements. So we want to add more space off of the back of our house, so into our own yard. The only issue being that our house is old, it was built in nineteen twenty-four, I should say historic, built in twenty-four, and then our neighbor's home was built the following year, I believe in nineteen twenty-five. So for nearly a hundred years, our homes have been in a configuration about ten feet apart from our foundation to the property line, and now the setback is fifteen feet. So for us to be in conformance to the setback, we would actually have to cut, instead of following our existing foundation, we have to cut five feet in and then go back. But we're using this space to add another bedroom and to elongate our kitchen, which is currently cramped. So we really wouldn't be able to make use of that space effectively if we were to conform to this setback.
Is the proposed addition, as I read this plan, I don't know, it's just eighteen, really eighteen point three-three by twelve, twelve by eighteen?
It, it would come twelve feet out off the back of the house, and then it would go eighteen feet over.
I know, but that's it, that's...
That's it.
That's it. So comparatively simple to other matters before you this evening.
Two.
One level or two.
It would be two, we'd have a, a new bedroom above our, our new kitchen, yes.
So the kitchen's at the bottom and the bedrooms upstairs.
Following the existing.
Following the existing line of that, of this, yeah.
And we have talked to the neighbors next to us, actually friends of ours, and their exact quote was, you could build a sky bridge to our house and come for dinner, we don't care.
No, go ahead.
Suffice it to say, we have their, their, their blessing, so...
So the waiver, so the waiver that you need is that side yard?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's... It's concrete pad currently, the, the entire back, where you want to put this?
Well, currently, we have...
It, it appears by...
Yeah, we would be digging a new foundation, but the concrete pad doesn't go the entire twelve feet, it's a patio, and it would be dug up as part of making the new foundation.
But currently, a vast majority of this area is, is concrete.
Yes, so we wouldn't really...
You'll be tearing the concrete, you're building a house over existing concrete area.
Well, we, we would be digging a full foundation, yes, to do that.
Yes.
Yes.
You're not adding any more impervious area, is what I'm saying, is what I'm trying to get at.
Correct.
No, sorry. Thank you for the leavin', sir.
Now, I'm going to ask you this question, I'm not being fresh, are you certain that twelve feet by eighteen point three-three feet is adequate for what you need?
Absolutely, yes, we wouldn't be able to afford pretty much more.
Your engineers and your contractors are satisfied that they can do a twelve by eighteen block? So if we grant you, I don't want you coming back because you need a foot.
No.
Because it's eighteen and a half, because it's...
Yeah, that's all, I'm just asking if those, they're so precise, that are you sure that that's what it is, it does, it's not fourteen feet?
We had the land surveying done, you know, we incurred the cost for that to ensure that we had what we needed to present to you, so I would be confident in their numbers. We don't have a contractor to build it yet, because we didn't want to go that route until we knew that we had the board's permission to either proceed.
Did the, your floor plan, that you have the architectural design, actually designed something that's an odd size? Most times buildings are built, it costs the same amount to build twenty feet as it does to build eighteen point three-three.
Oh, oh, okay, I see what you mean.
So, that's an odd number, just like if you build a deck, it's, you know, you build a deck in even increments, because if you don't, it costs you more, because you have to buy a ten-foot, and you have to spend the time to cut a foot off.
Yep.
So that's when we see this, that's why you're saying, when we see this odd number, that it's...
Other window.
Huh?
Yeah, so the reason... So, so the reason for that is, I don't know if there's anything that adequately shows it, but probably this one? Okay, maybe this one? Oh, okay. So the way that our house is currently, and he, he pointed it out exactly, is this line right here, in between these two small windows?
Yes.
Is the wall that...
Will be extending.
Yes, because on one side is our living room, and on the other is our hallway and our bathroom, and then subsequently our kitchen, so we would not want to go that extra foot, because it would only be adding one foot to our living room, it wouldn't, and it would block our window.
That's what I would do, that's what I'm, I'm thinking of doing, just give you the waiver.
What we're going at is, a lot of times it's based on the plan, or they could just say that they're going to grant you a waiver to allow the, the setback of the building to be nine feet five, and the stairwell to be five, five point six. And that's your setback, and then if it turns out that eighteen point three, the eighteen feet four inches, is eighteen feet ten inches, it's not a problem, because it's not affecting the setback. We don't want to see, they don't want to see you back here. And we see that all the time.
Well, so our, our, our only issue is on, in, in terms of not being in accordance with the setback, would be on that foundation line.
That's correct, that's what we're talking about.
So if that's not anything more than...
The only variance, the only thing that you would need is that side yard.
Because otherwise, we're just going back and fill our own.
On the east, on the east, yeah. So Widemo Street, east side, if this north arrow is correct, it's going to be the east side waiver, nine point five and five point six would be the two points, and then you can build what you want to build over there. So, okay, so let me see if, is there anyone here in favor of this petition?
It looks like on the plan, that the roof height maintains the same height as they just had to the west.
Yes, yep.
Anyone here in favor, anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay, so based on those calculations, do I get a motion to grant the variance on the east side with nine point five feet vari, so the side yard would be nine point five feet from the building and five point six feet from the stairwell? Motion to grant, Dan Dupire, second, second John Frank, any discussion on the motion, all those in favor?
Do we just need to stipulate that the, that if they do extend it, it can't change the other setback on the other side if they did go bigger?
No, yes, we can say that, that the set, this...
That, that they are limited to that range?
They're limited to that range on the, on the east side, we're not dealing anything with the, yeah, twelve.
They're limited to the twelve.
Twelve feet depth, twelve feet depth, is that what you're...
No, I'm talking about the width, that they don't interfere with the other side, I mean that it doesn't...
That it doesn't go into five point eight?
Yeah, I mean, if we're just going with the general, you can maintain the one setback, but you don't, you've got to maintain both.
So maintain both, if you want to do that, put both setbacks, then that gives them what they need.
That, that whole range.
Okay.
Six point eight.
Is that six point eight or five point eight?
May I ask that there, please?
Yes.
Sorry, if we were to change, if we were to reconfigure it to put the door to go off the kitchen onto the other side for any reason, would that affect anything?
Well, that's what, that's what Mr. Hawkins is saying, so if we keep it at six point eight, that is showing, keep it within that dimension, then put it where you, twelve feet, but where you're going.
So as long as we don't make this...
You mean exit out towards your shed?
Yeah.
Yeah, what they're saying is, as long as you don't go on the other side of your shed, but you, you, Pierce, you don't want to move your shed.
No, we don't have to go that far anyway, so we'd be okay.
If you build it on the inside, you wouldn't need a variance, there's no variance to that. It's strictly, you're asking for the variance for the twelve feet along the side yard.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Okay? So that's Jim's motion.
Second.
Whose motion was, I thought it was Jim, it was Dan's motion to grant, the further discussion was over here, so now, Dan, you want to change your, modify your motion to include that? Okay, so Dan's motion, do we have a second on Dan's modified motion?
Second.
Second, Jim Hawkins, any further discussion on the motion? None, all those in favor? Three, four, five, okay, so it's granted with those conditions, with those setbacks, fourteen days from now, come get your decision, it should be twenty-one days. Or fourteen days, I'll write the, I'll sign the decisions at twenty-one, so about thirty-one days, your decision will be done.
A decision is recorded within fourteen days, and then there's a twenty-one day period after that. And then once that's done, come pick up.
Proceed with plans and...
Come pick it up.
Yes.
And then record it at the registry.
Please record it at the registry.
You can come to office, and we'll, we can explain all of that to you.
Thank you.
Don't worry, mom and pop, we understand, I don't have to explain it to the engineer that was just prior, he understands all of it.
There were a tough act to follow, they had me a little nervous, we're going to be honest. Thank you very much, you're a star, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, agenda item number four, Farmington Limited Partnership Care of Peter Salino Esquire, four hundred Columbia Street, Lot N twenty-five-two. Did I miss one?
Number two.
I'm sorry. Peter, sit down, Divine Properties LLC, two eighty-four, two eighty-eight Broadway Street, Lot G four twenty-one. Special permit request pursuant to section eighty-six, four twenty-eight, requesting to reestablish a pre-existing non-conforming commercial use of office space on first floor of mixed-use building in the A-two district, lot size three thousand one hundred and forty-seven, plus or minus square feet.
Good evening, for the record, my name is Dan Aggyar of Sitech Engineering, I'm just here in the city, as well as down in Marshfield. We're here this evening on this petition, we're going to go up to two eighty-four through two eighty-eight Broadway, this plan may look somewhat familiar to you all.
They all blend in.
Back in March, we had submitted, submitted a special permit subdivision plan, which cut out what we're showing on this parcel, our parcel, parcel two to our south, and then what you see is parcel three to the east. I've labeled them as parcels, because they even, they haven't even been given new assessors map and lot numbers yet. During that process, through that special permit process, we were allowed to subdivide this into three parcels, doing the best that we could, we had easements for parking and, and everything else. So we complied with those requirements of the special permit, recorded it, filed the subdivision plan with the subsequent easement documentation on it, filed that subdivision plan in July, that's been recorded at the registry as well. The owner, when he had gone into the building inspector to renovate the first floor of the building that we're here this evening, two eighty-four through two eighty-eight at the corner, you'll see, and I think you have this cut sheet in your application, but I can pass along the color one to you. It just, it shows what that building is and was, the first floor of that unit had previously contained a commercial use. I know exactly what the use was, I was clear that it was a commercial use, the building inspector made the interpretation that the use had ceased for more than a two-year period of time, and would not give a permit to renovate the building, you can do it for it. So luckily, zoning does have a provision under eighty-six four twenty-eight, where we can come in and ask you by a special permit, basically to reinstitute the previous non-conforming commercial use. This is an A-two district, the owners of the building are here this evening, the site is going to be, that first floor will be renovated for general office space, maybe like a real estate office or something of that, if you're not a high retail use. So we could, we could limit it to office space of, of some kind. So luckily, again, by special permit, we have that ability to come back and, and clean that up, so the building inspector can grant a permit to allow the renovation of that first floor of that building. That's all, it's a straightforward application.
What about parking?
Again, going back to the special permit, there's an existing garage on this site, you'll see that contained all of the parking for this building. The other parking areas that you see shown here, and that's why I showed it during that decision, the two ninety-six was afforded a number of spaces that you see shown, as well as three fifty-five, and there are cross-easements there to provide their parking for their two uses. This existing building on the corner was relying on the existing garage, which is how many, four stalls, as well as off-street parking.
So the existing garage will provide the parking for the...
For the apartments, correct, and then whatever small commercial use takes place there, there's ample parking on Broadway and Division Street, just as it has been in the past.
During the day, I just wanted to build that, sorry.
What are the hours?
Nine to five.
How many days a week?
What's that?
How many days a week?
Monday through Fridays.
Sure you don't want Saturday?
I mean, I might be there, working, but...
Okay, name and address, please.
My name's David Olivera.
Hello, David Olivera.
I live at twenty-three Clement Boulevard in Westbrook, and I own Divine Properties with Matthew, and I'm also the owner and broker on record for Divine Real Estate, and that's going to be the office that's going to be there.
So it's going to be real estate office?
Real estate office, yes.
Any other type of office, built offices there?
Nope, strictly, oh, well, we own property as well, there might be some tenants in and out, potentially paying.
Just the two of you?
That's it right now, I own it and he...
No, no, I know, but Monday...
But in this building, like, how many offices, you, just one?
One, one office, so...
Yeah, although this building was large, the majority of it is garage, so I think it's probably only like maybe thirty by thirty-eight is the space?
It's about a thousand square feet, so yeah, I think that, if you do the math, that's...
So we're not going to have ten brokers, it's just going to be the two of you there?
It's going to be one broker, I'm not looking to accumulate a lot of agents, honestly.
No, that's, no, you're doing fine.
So then the garage will have enough parking for you two, the two of you?
Yep, stay out of the rain.
I would, I would, I would say Saturday.
Yeah, so that's what I was saying, Monday through Friday, yeah, during the day, the road opens up a lot, actually.
Just do so.
Yeah, Monday through Friday.
We, we would request, just, you don't want some, even if you're not taking customers in, you technically shouldn't be there, so, let's say there was a fire, something happened to you on that Saturday, you don't belong there.
The chairman recommends that you go to Saturday, too.
Yep.
That way I...
You don't have to be there, but you can...
You don't have to come back.
No, but I don't want you coming back, and I don't want any issues. No, but I don't want you coming back and I don't want any issues.
I appreciate the advice, we can definitely do that.
Cause Dan will still charge you.
Just you still.
The other.
How long hasn't, has it not been used now?
I, I, we couldn't find that information out.
But, but let me say this about, cause after my independent research got me to, they've been, it's been assessed, there's been the two.
It's still assessed, actually.
As, as, no, as an office, it's been forever apartments and office, and I was thinking that when the two years had passed, that there was gonna be a removal of that from the assessor's card, there hasn't been. Uh, so I didn't go back, I know that, I think the last use there may have been a salon, uh, but I, I don't know the answer to that, but the simple answer is what, looking through the assessors, prep, preparing for the meetings this evening, I saw that it just continues to be assessed as a commercial space. Split, the, the tax bill was both, commercial and.
Which is why he was very surprised to not get.
So, anyway, that's really, is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Members of the board, any other questions about this, Carolyn?
No, I mean, motion to.
Okay, motion to grant special permit under, uh, what is it, eighty-six, uh, four twenty-eight?
Four twenty-eight with conditions, uh, hours of operation nine to five Monday through Saturday.
Conditions, nine to five, Monday through Saturday.
They just follow whatever it's like.
Whatever. Is that, except without dealing with signage, where they'll do whatever's in the area that they can do.
Right.
Okay? Okay, so that's Carolyn's motion, do I have a second? Second, Dan Dupierre, any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan. Thanks, guys.
Okay, no, I'm sorry, Attorney Salino.
This is Joe.
It is not, this is live and in color for you.
You tell us to fill the beat.
Farmington Limited Partnership Care of Peter Salino Esquire, four hundred Columbia Street Lot N twenty-five two. So number four is the variance request to waive front and side yard setback requirements in the central business district, CBD district, and to expand the assisted living facility by adding two-story, thirty-three unit facility, providing thirty-nine total parking spaces on site. Lot size eighty-two thousand seven hundred thirteen plus or minus square feet, previous variance relief granted on December twenty-first, two thousand and one.
I'm just gonna pass up additional handout, if I may, relative to parking.
Kinda wait, what you think, shoot, I wasn't this ahead of time.
So for purposes of the record, members of the board, Attorney Peter Salino, five fifty Locust Street, Paul River for the petitioner, with me tonight is CJ Boyle, his family owns, uh, Farmington, Farmington Limited Partnership, which is the owner of the parcel. The parcel is known as the landmark, it's located at four hundred Columbia Street. The family, uh, purchased the property in nineteen ninety-seven, at that time Attorney Ron Lowenstein had represented the family seeking a variance, uh, for the use of eighty-eight units, uh, waiving use and dimensional requirements. Then there was a subsequent variance, uh, decision by this board to allow them to construct seven additional units within the existing facility, and that was in two thousand and two. Would you like a copy?
No, no, I've got it, I just, cause I, one of the decisions had some limiting language that I wanted to ask you about, but I'm sure you're prepared to talk about.
I am prepared to talk about it, so the first one was eighty-eight units, uh, and the second one was seven additional units. So as we come before you with this proposal tonight, the proposal is thirty-three additional units, the building as per the plan will be joined by a one-story connector to the existing building. The improvements are contemplated to be on the east side of the site, which is the factory of terror site, if you will, from, from a local knowledge perspective, uh, the proposal is that.
It's in that vacant lot along Pearl Street?
That's correct, there's, uh, a portion of that lot is paved right now, and the proposal would have the building being built on a portion of the pavement. The proposal has sixteen underground parking spaces and then eight additional parking spaces, and the, um, so I think as I looked at the bylaw, um, the first issue I see is the proposed, uh, building has front yard and side yard setback issues. So, are we doing, were we doing the variance first, Mr. Chair? Yes, okay, so the first variance I'm requesting is front yard and side yard setback, uh, because obviously we don't meet either of those as per the plan, the.
But that's, it's going to be a new building?
A new building, yes.
All right, so let's get back to the December twenty of two thousand and one variance.
Two thousand and one, okay, yes.
Which, where the board granted to construct seven additional units to the existing assisted living facility, um, but the condition was that there shall be no exterior expansion to the building.
Right.
Okay, so now.
That is, that was a condition, that's why I think.
That was the condition of the additional seven, but you don't read that as being no, no, um, expansion to the exterior of the building as being a prohibition, that this is as big as the building gets and you can't go any further.
I do not, I think that was at that time, based on the petition presented.
Okay? Go ahead, keep going.
Okay, so I think my first issue, uh, that we need relief is front yard and side yard, then I look to use, uh, the two, the nineteen ninety-seven variance sets the use as a maximum of eighty-eight units. So I would submit to you that you could argue that eighty-eight is permitted, uh, meaning it's conforming use up to eighty-eight, maybe plus the seven. So the reason I pled it in the alternative is because I think I may not have an approved use here, uh, I think you could see it, that maybe there is an approved use under the existing variances, or may not.
So it becomes a proved use, a conforming use versus a non-conforming use.
Correct.
Go ahead.
So hence the, the alternative pleading, so if we're sticking with the variance, then I would submit to you that, A, the site is definitely on the shape, it is built on a hill, uh, and the further development is constrained because of the current building on the existing site. I don't think it's detrimental to the neighborhood, in fact, it's a use that's been made for twenty-plus years by my client, the proposed use is memory care, so as I understand it, memory care is an up-and-coming area in elder care, uh, specifically to handle Alzheimer's patients. The patients are not expected to drive, in fact, they would be unable to drive, and there seems to be, and CJ can speak to this if the board wants, but the analysis seems to suggest that we are an underserved community for this type of service, that the baby boomer population is reaching their seventies, and that this type of service is gonna be, it's not a slight, it's just a fact, uh, and that, uh, this is gonna be, uh, necessary. So I don't think this, uh, derogates from the intent of the bylaw, obviously the bylaw's trying to group things that are of like use, and I think this keeps that consistent, so that is my pitch on the variance as to use and setback.
Can you address the parking?
Yes.
That is a concern.
Certainly, so as I look at the bylaws, eighty-six dash four four one, and the bylaw calls for one space per four beds and an additional loading space. So the proposal currently is thirty-three additional to the ninety that are there, so by my math, uh, we're required to give you thirty-two spaces, and the plan shows thirty-nine spaces, so I think we exceed the parking requirement, and that's why I didn't ask for any kind of relief related to the parking, uh, either by special permit or variance.
How many employees will you have, will there even be enough employee parking?
Yeah, so the employees are very limited, that's why I passed out that grid, and the executive director is sitting right here to speak to it, but effectively, as I understand it, during the day, on a two-floor assisted living or memory care facility, you have to have two nurses and a shift manager, so you're actually only adding three employees during the peak hours. The dining staff, the maintenance staff, and the director of maintenance is here as well, is gonna maintain the same volume that it is now.
Yes? So you're gonna add thirty-three more beds and no more staff?
No, you're gonna add, uh, so the staff is shown on the grid that I passed out, you're gonna add five?
If you could, I used to be good in math, but I, 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 I don't under, I, I, I'm actually having, um, this looks like it was written by an engineer, it's pretty.
CJ's a smart guy, um, all right, so ASL stands for assisted living.
Assisted living.
Yes, and MC is memory care.
Okay.
Okay, so during the time range is shown, seven AM to three PM or six AM to two PM, which is a shift indicator, um, there would be a total of five employees.
Now, we're talking about the entire facility, all?
No, no, we're talking about the additional.
Just the addition.
Just the addition.
Correct.
Oh, I'd love to know about the existing facility and parking on that.
All right.
I didn't.
I have a different table for that.
Oh, wait, you started on this table, so get us, get us through assisted memory care, because you're, you're causing my memory to get taxed.
Okay, uh, so in the top part of the grid, during the day, uh, assisted living is one, memory care is four, and then in the evening, three to eleven or two to ten, again, depending on when your shift is, it's one plus three equals four, and then overnight shift is, um, three, one assisted living, two memory care.
So let, let me ask, so tell me why I'm seeing assisted living one when this is, we're just dealing with the memory care unit?
Because twenty-four are gonna be memory care and thirty-three are gonna be assisted.
So it's not all thirty-three memory, it's not gonna be a?
I'm sorry, nine assisted living. So not all thirty-three are gonna be memory care.
Not all thirty-three, so the memory care unit is not going to be one hundred percent memory care, it's going to have a combination use.
Right, and then, I think I have that.
Do, do, do residents of the assisted, uh, living, do they have vehicles?
I have a different table for that, may I pass out a different table?
Go ahead. So we put this one aside for now?
Uh, we'll use them in conjunction.
Or is it?
Okay, so this is a parking survey that was conducted by Phil Souza, who's the maintenance director, who's up here in the back, um, the dates are listed, this was in contemplation of the variance or, and or special permit petition.
So this is the current facility you have now?
Yes.
Okay.
And so you'll see the residents are labeled there, to answer your question, Mr. Moore, sir. And I believe that was Thanksgiving weekend, right?
Yep.
All right, so let's talk about it, Monday, the twenty-fifth of November, there, on the first, first shift, seven AM to three, we had twelve residents parking and seventeen other people. The seventeen other people, is that including staff, visitors?
Yes.
Okay, so now, then on the two P, on the second, the three PM to eleven PM shift, we have an additional resident showing up, and we have a decrease in three other people, so somebody went home.
Correct.
And then from eleven PM to seven, one of the residents disappeared, went back to work, and the other one, there, there's nobody else there, so there's only three people parking.
Correct.
The next day, it's interesting that you say that, I'm gonna find out what day Thanksgiving was, but, um, the next day, we had the twelve residents.
Twenty-eight, all right.
Thursday.
Yeah, uh, and then we had nineteen, so we had other people coming in that day, and then on the second shift, we had eleven, and then other thirteen, so the residents were leaving, yeah, that's Thanksgiving. All right, so it's good we had, during that three PM, we had people showing up, the third, we had twelve, so, you know, there wasn't much activity with the residents, but the others, always that third shift, eleven PM to seven, it seems is really not, there's only three cars there. Then on Thanksgiving Day, we had the same twelve residents, but we had lots of visitors, we had twenty-four in the first shift.
Right.
Then we went back down to the twelve and one of the residents, I wanna know where that resident goes, um, and then on the third.
They go to the casino.
They go.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just laughing, that three, three to eleven, this guy disappears, he or she goes, um, so.
That's probably factual.
It is, it's, I'm sure it's very factual, it's presented as evidence, I know you.
Okay, so that's, that, that's the parking, that's, so if we graph it out to see what it is, that's what's happening there.
Right. And does that present a problem at any time, that volume?
Um, I don't believe so, but if you wanna speak to that, or if, if I may, ask you to.
If the executive director would like to speak.
This is Lisa Papoulas, she's the executive director of the facility, if you could just speak to that, please.
Yeah, busy times like the holiday and things like that, or if we have an event, we do have side parking as well on the Millican Boulevard side, so staff and we will park over there when we need to.
On the Millican Boulevard side, okay.
Yeah, sort of, behind Dunkin' Donuts, we.
Yeah, no, I got, I'm just trying to think where, yeah, okay.
It's shown on the plan at Millican Associates.
That says twenty reserve spaces, is that for you?
We do have it back, yeah, we have it back.
Like twenty.
No, that, you're not looking at that side, you're looking at the other side. Behind the.
I was, where it says Millican Associates?
There's fifteen visitor and there's twenty.
It should be Millican Boulevard.
You're pointing north, John?
There's a loading dock behind here where, where the gas station is, behind the gas station, on Millican, not on Second, you're looking at the other.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm looking at the, whatever, Millican Associates, that's someone else's parking.
You don't want a second, yeah.
Yes.
That's Hubs, Millican Associates, I think it's the Hubs, yeah.
That's Fidel Burger.
You're just talking about the, your back pavement area, your quote-unquote loading area that goes to where your backyard, the gazebo is?
There's a park there too, yeah.
Yes.
Uh, too bad your plan doesn't show that. How do you access it?
How many spots there?
Peter, how do you access it?
How do you, how do you access it?
There's, there's an easement in between Dunkin', Huzz, and, and the corner store.
Oh, right here.
That, that's an easement.
Okay, so how many spaces you have there?
Back there, there's gonna be, I wanna say, um, fourteen, fifteen, if you wanted to, you know, pop back there, yeah, fourteen, fifteen spaces, no problem, it's gotta be four.
Is that employee parking?
Yes, yeah, yeah, that's.
Too bad your plan doesn't show it. Did I say that already? You know, I'm all about plans, you know?
You know, as far as the parking, you know, we actually, so many times I have to pull people out, cause they come, they try to use the mall lot, you know, Cheek across the street, many of these visitors, they, they'll come and pull in, so I have to go over there and make sure they get out. So we have plenty, as far as parking.
Well, I'm glad I parked on the street today.
No problem, yeah, and there is parking in the streets, so.
Think it easily, do a new plan, show the parking there, so we can have to add it in. Okay? Go ahead, keep going, Peter.
That's what I have for you on the variance, and if we need to talk about the special permit request, then we can.
Can I ask, this, the quote-unquote underground parking, that, that's not subterranean, I mean, that's, is it gonna be, is it gonna be the buildings built over it?
Yes, the building is built over it.
Okay, so it's really not, it's, it's below building parking, but not subterranean?
It is not subterranean, and you can.
So is that because of the slope and the shape of the lot, so the lot's gonna be on piers, that'll be horizontal, but underneath will be the parking, in that?
That is correct.
Basically, it's covered parking.
Yes, and the roof line will line up, per the, you know, the architecture that we have so far will line up with the current roof line, be a little bit less, actually, it looks like a foot less.
So how many total parking spaces will you have between the old building and what you are proposing?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine?
Thirty-nine is the, yes.
Without these unmapped?
Without those unofficial.
Unofficial, unmapped?
And then you have an additional, how many unofficial spots?
We'll call it fourteen for the record.
And that doesn't count these, does that count the seven and the six over on the side?
Yeah, I have to look at it now.
Yeah, I think when you say when you add them all up.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, yeah, that's, yeah.
That was the way I added it.
And so with the addition you are proposing, how many additional, or how many people will be using parking spots? I have your, obviously, parking survey for the current facility, but.
Did you go back to the other grid?
So you go back to the other grid, can you just walk us through it, I mean, if somebody's assisted living, they might have a car, I mean.
Yeah.
They may, and it's tough to forecast that, at least twenty-four of the units, we, the people are not fit to drive, so they will not have a car. But the, you know, the visitor parking flows, so the only thing I can report to you is the employee parking, and that's the purpose of that ground.
And the additional employees were three?
Five, four, three.
Five, four, three.
Five, four, three.
You stole mine.
We think it is five through the day, then you have to count for visitors and if there's any residents that have.
Yeah, no, no, but that's, I'm just saying, I wanna get to the, the fixed group that will be there every day, so how many is it going to be, so we've got the existing, and then with the new thirty-three units, there's only going to be an addition, if I understood Peter correctly, three additional staff members?
Overnight.
Five, so during the day.
During, highest, yeah. Time is five.
So if you added that seven AM to seven, seven AM to three PM peak?
Yes.
To your numbers, if you added five to all of those, plus, what would you?
Well, go ahead, you're, you're the director of planning, I'm, I'm fishing to get it, cause I think you took my plan.
Oh.
But that's okay.
Oh, I was getting ready to ask.
Go ahead, ask, ask, go ahead.
What is your S? What is your estimation as the manager of the facility and the owner of the facility, or the maintenance person, of the, you have currently ninety units?
Yes.
And that, is that all assisted living now?
Yes.
So of the ninety units, what is the estimated, what's your current percentage of people that own cars?
Progressions.
I'd say between-
It's less than twelve now, at this point.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's around ten right now.
Yeah.
Ten.
I would say eight to ten.
So that's, that's what, that's what, that's where, that's where I was going when I was looking at these numbers, that there aren't, the residents don't have lots of cars.
Right, and you're, you're at peak, you're full? Eighty-seven out of ninety, and at that point, we were full. Meaning the point of the graph? Yeah. They had full occupancy, yeah, the Thanksgiving timeframe.
Are employees directed to park in the back or not?
Our whole kitchen staff parks in the back.
Just your kitchen staff?
Yeah.
When, when you say, when we say the back, in, in the pot, that's not-
The unofficial-
The unofficial, non-shown parking spaces that might be shown in the future on a plan?
Yes.
There will be, in the site plan.
So the upper box doesn't, the five, four, three doesn't include kitchen staff?
No, but right below that, so where it says below is our current staff?
Right, so it's eight, six, five.
And that's two Saturday, Sunday?
And then below that is the wellness, current staff.
CJ, can you just speak to wellness, what does that mean?
That's nursing staff, period, roof staff.
Okay.
What's in front? When I was on Columbia Street looking at it today, you had signs, I didn't wa, I didn't want to get thrown out, but it looks like the parking. I was going to park and walk across the street. But there are signs, that this, I don't know what it says, whether it's handicap, that along Columbia Street, there's parking, but there are signs in each parking space.
Resident parking.
That's what that says, resident parking?
Yeah, we do have residents.
Okay. I was going to walk around and look, and I says, no, I'll just ask tonight.
You would have met Phil in the afternoon instead of hitting-
I think we've met before, I've been at the facility many times, we've been, we've, yeah.
So you're losing two handicap parking places, but I don't see relocated anywhere else, are you, are we doing that? We would have to, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, they would have, they, yeah, they would have to recreate or find two additional handicaps.
Right, and the two underneath the building are being moved on the summer.
Yeah.
Those are the ones with walk-in.
Okay, so those would stay? Yeah.
Both of them are walk-in.
These two?
Yes.
Which two are those, Peter?
Those would be northeast, southeast corner of the building, right? Yeah, right there.
But I want, I want John and Jim to see where they are.
Yeah.
Oh, you've identified them?
That's where, those are where they're at.
But they're going to be replaced.
Yep.
Just to make sure you have, if Michael, you have to have some. Yeah, what they're saying is, I guess, if you build a building to this inch, you can't access those two. Okay. So we'll have to replicate.
Well, if you so choose to approve it, then obviously site plan review will be required. I would specifically express that in any decision that you do.
What, site plan? Of course.
Yeah.
No, is there anything else that maybe we're missing in terms of doing this analysis or looking at with the structure of the building, the two floors, the thirty-three units?
Well, it's a special permit, so it gives the board long, oh, wide-
We're not, we're not in special permit yet, we're just doing the variance part.
Okay, well, a variance or a special permit gives you wide latitude, they're asking for something, therefore, if you wanted to exceed the parking requirement, you are well within your right to do that-
To ask for, sure.
To ask for it, and parking, you know, appears to be of issue, that's, I mentioned to the, Mr. Salino, when we got this, that I think he needed additional parking information, that's why I know he's provided it tonight. And if you look at the, when you look at the Google map aerial, which is, sometimes is always telling, the parking lot on Google Earth is full, which means, which, when you see that, then you go out and you look, and you, and you go see, that parking can be of issue. You know, they exceed the minimum parking requirement, but sometimes the use, our parking table isn't, you know, reflective of it.
But if we, but if we add fourteen, and say a minimum of fifty-three?
Yeah, or, I, I wouldn't, I think they should show what, how much parking-
Oh, no, 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 I think that's, I'm going that way, but I'm saying just in terms of numbers, fourteen plus thirty-nine.
Because when they come, when they come to site plan, and I'm going to go, well, you really can't count those three spaces that you've designed back here because it requires a hovercraft, because I actually get those site plans. So, I, I would refrain from saying fourteen, because that's, might be stacking them in there like cordwood, and that's not really how we can approve it.
Alright, so let me ask the question, if we want more detailed plans, do we want them to come back with a more detailed plan showing the parking before we act on it?
That is up to the board.
No, no, I'm, I'm asking, I'm not asking you, I'm asking-
That's what I mean, concern, I'm, you know, I don't have concerns about the special permit, but I have concerns about parking.
I'm looking at the board members, and I'm asking the question, if we're making this leap of faith that there's fourteen, before we act on it, do you want a revised plan showing that to take care of the parking issue? Because we've spent a few minutes talking about it, and I-
Would that be the site review that would handle that?
Yeah, they, they would, but if the representation for us to make the determination about the variance, that we've got this two-story building, thirty-three units, and we want parking, if we're going to be dealing with parking issues, we should probably have all the facts before we make this leap of faith and say, yeah, there might be fourteen, maybe not, because at least for myself, and I can't speak for Carolyn, but I know that we're concerned about the number of parking spaces available, because it, it just seems a burden on the existing facility. But if you can use that back part, and we got fourteen places that are designated and are functional, then maybe that relieves some of the concern that, at least I have.
If we make a motion to say a minimum of ten spots in the back, and it doesn't need an site plan, does it have to come back?
Yeah, I would think, I would think that they would want to get it approved with what can be done, and I would prefer that than to have to haggle with the site plan review.
My recommendation is to have it done with perfection here, rather than back and forth, John. But, I'm only one voice, and there are four other members. But, Carolyn, let's see, no, I mean, you were doing, you were doing the math, you had done the calculations, and you already identified it.
I don't have concerns with the special permit part, but the variance I do based on the parking, and I'm not clear with these plans.
So, do you want to come back with that next meeting with a more detailed plan dealing with the parking?
Yes, please.
Do you have access to both the easements, so it's like a circle? Because it shows-
Oh, the easement, it's on a, it's on a circle.
Oh, there's a sewer easement there, you're talking about, you have an access easement between the gas station and the restaurant?
Just so I'm clear with the engineer, so we want more detail on parking, do we want different calculations that we're looking, what else can I ask for? Since we're coming back, we're going to come back to a lot of stuff.
I want to, yeah, I want to, we want the plan, we want the parking to be shown.
Please, every spot, okay.
They need to show how they, how they can park in this, the rear area, and I would think you would want to label them employee-only spaces.
So why don't you have the engineer talk to the director of planning?
And the maintenance person on how they actually do it.
And how they actually do it, so what's presented for the board the next meeting is we have details that the planning director can either walk us through, or we know that there's a high level of confidence, we know what we're talking about.
And I know Christian Farland and all the other people there, and they always, I always recommend email me before you submit a filing.
Okay, I think that makes sense.
When was the, when was the filing done? Do we need, we need your written permission to extend, so we're not running?
Do you want me to write it right now, or are you wanting to-
No, no, I just, I'm just, I want to make sure, days, because I'm doing the calculation of my head on the days.
Yeah, this was a late filing.
So, why don't, why don't we get it in writing that you agree that we're continuing, both, why don't we continue both matters to the next meeting? Now, we've got seven, seven on the next?
Is this amended, is this amended for the new?
No, this isn't, no amendment, this is just a more detailed one.
Just a revised, more detailed one.
Because, because it was advertised as providing thirty-nine parking spaces.
Dave?
Yes, sir.
Can we have him show the handicap parking spots on the revised plan?
Yeah.
Sure, I mean, being, being a care facility, you would be-
No, but what I, that's, that's why I'm recommending that their engineer talk to the director of planning to get the detail, the, all the detail that we want on the plan, so we know what we're dealing with, versus just guessing how many would move into, yeah, this is going to be to replace. Let's see it on the plan and have a detailed plan for the next meeting, yes.
Okay.
What was the, yeah, so?
If it's amended.
Yes, depend.
If it's amended, I need the, the language tomorrow.
He can do that.
If it's not amended, then it's just before the next meeting.
Well, they're just adding more, not taking away.
I think it's-
I don't think they can have, you don't have to re-advertise it.
I don't think we have, we're not reducing, so if we got the minimum and it's going, if anything, it's going to be greater than, so I think we're fine.
Okay, so then, it definitely doesn't matter.